Okay, two public comments on B1.
One says "public comment" and one says "D1."
So, did you want to speak, Mrs. Smith, on public comment before closed session or public comment before the action?
Public comment for closed session.
Okay, so it's just Mrs. Smith, three minutes.
Chairman Kate Parker, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, my name is Kate Smith. Tonight you are hiring a man whose superintendency was not renewed in Santa Clara County. And who the systemic and systematic violations of ethical, legal, and civil codes, laws, and just plain decency has now pushed the people to unprecedented action. COPA, the most powerful state association of attorneys, advocates, and professionals in special education, is convening their annual conference and is considering calling a strike. The parents, attorneys, advocates, activists, and teachers and administrators in Santa Barbara have already decided to take political action. We will have a strike that will call attention to our outrage and to our suffering. And we will wear black armbands in memoriam for the over 200 special needs students who have died at the hands of school staff and the millions of students and families who are fed up with the corruption, the violations of law, cronyism retaliation, and use of taxpayer-paid lawyers to effectively cover up the corruption. We are in crisis in Santa Barbara. We have told you countless times that we have the solutions and we have the personnel, that we have asked you to place into position so that our school system can operate and so that our children can be educated. I would like to read from a letter from Carolyn Renard that you received today regarding your political suicide, regarding your refusal to hire the people who have asked for a position and that we support. I'll have you know that on June 17th, when you said that there's
Thirty seconds.
That you raised the salary for the special education director to 160 on June 17th because you said, "We cannot attract qualified personnel." That was a lie. The salary you are giving to Tom Guajardo is a waste of taxpayer-paid money. Carolyn wrote to you.
Mrs. Smith, thank you. We will now go ahead and move into closed session for Oh, yes, Dr. Noel, you wanted to share something.
Let me explain first that, as you may recall, I'm not, I did not serve on any of the vetting committees in this recruitment process. And know only what I received in one email from the superintendent about the candidate and what I've heard in emails from members of the public and what I've learned on my own. And I think I've, I feel good about my effort. I made a good faith effort to come here, prepared to evaluate a candidate. But I keep picking up these vibes and rumors that this is already a done deal. And I hear that by one report that the superintendent himself referred to the person as the new, to one particular individual, as the new executive director of special education. It seems to be part of the lore of the street already. And indeed, I walk in and find that our public relations person is already photographing this person as though there's something to celebrate. And I just find this very troubling. And I know some parents have had the same reaction that they wonder whether this is really a decision we're making or ratification of something that's already been decided. And I, I'm very uncomfortable about it.
Thank you. And with that, we will move into closed session and return at 7:00 PM. Open the meeting of August 18th, a special meeting of the Santa Barbara School Board. We are returning to open session and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have Spanish translation available? Mr. Huiyo.
Good evening. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sandra Trujillo y soy la interprete para la reunión de esta noche. Si alguien necesita de mis servicios, por favor ven a hablar conmigo, estoy al fondo del salón. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. Please notify our staff member, our lone staff member sitting on the side there if you need that. At this point, we will move to item C2, announcement of closed session action. There is no action to report out of closed session. Item C3, public comment.
We have one speaker slip, actually, it's for item D1, it's not for public comment.
All right, I have three here for public comment. You don't have any?
I'm assuming you're so understanding.
Do you want to check? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and call these since I have them here. We have Joan Esposito, followed by Carolyn Renard, followed by Kate Smith.
Good evening. I first came in front of you on July 23rd at your board meeting and complained about one of your school principals. On June 29th, my husband and I met with Dr. Sarvis to provide him with the complaints, with the issues that we were addressing. I received a letter today from your director of personnel who said she's investigating this complaint. I don't understand what steps the school is taking in this. But in the letter, your employee said, "Your complaint is specific enough that I don't believe I will need to meet with you or the parents, or the parent unless I absolutely need further information and clarification." Well, what complaint? I, I have not put in, put in a written complaint. There are emails that have gone back and forth. In my meeting with my husband and I and Dr. Sarvis on June 29th, I had three pages of issues with this principal. And it looks like this is going to be rushed through and only a couple of the items that I've provided in emails are going to be addressed. What complaint, what kind of complaint process is this? This is why parents can't file complaints with this district. You've given me the policy, but no one has given me the steps. And it's also, it says, "You'll be notified to the outcome of the investigation when we've completed the process." Well, number one, there's misinformation in this letter. And what are we going to do about this? Am I going to have to keep coming in front of you for the next year on these investigations? It should be very simple to file a complaint. And a lot of my parents have disabilities themselves, like I do. But at least I've taught, I've been taught how to read and write. They cannot go in this process. They can't, they're not going to get any justice in this process. And I have three parents that I complained about, the issues with Dr. Sarvis. And when I asked Dr. Sarvis, could I bring the one parent in who I complained to the board, he said, "No." And now you have your other director of personnel saying that she's not, she doesn't feel she'll need to meet with me or the parent. This parent needs to share what she went through with the principal. I don't know who else to go to. I figured I'd gone to the highest in the district, Dr. Sarvis. You know, I even brought my husband with me this time because sometimes you tell me things and you don't follow through.
Thirty seconds.
And I have some with the, to, you know, to, what is the word again? Sorry, word retrieval. But what are we going to do about this process? What is this board going to do about this process? This has been a delay. Now, this child is going back to the school and I don't want any retaliation against this parent or this child. And the principal has so far shown she's not responsible for serving these children's needs. Delay in assessments, delay in full assessments. Dr. Sarvis, I gave you the information.
Thank you.
You took copious notes.
Thank you, Mrs. Esposito.
And I have, by the way, I've given you the email that I received from the district. Thank you.
Next is Carolyn Renard, followed by Kate Smith. Mrs. Renard, you wanted to speak on C2, which is strictly that I said that there was no action, so you want to speak on C2 first?
You, on the closed session during public, this public comment? No. I, first of all, I'd like to say is the situation that Ms. Esposito was just talking about is just evidence of more of the same. Nothing has changed. I'd like to also say that, as you know, there are no special education administrators available to parents at the district during this whole week, the week before school starts after all the problems. This is unconscionable, particularly since there's two highly qualified administrators available but can't get, even get a job interview because of this district administration's apparent pattern and practice of retaliation against administrators who actually follow the law, who actually have the nerve to advocate for children's rights and to speak out against wrongdoing, and especially those who incur the wrath of the county office of education. How this board can continue to support the administration of Brian's services beyond me? It's clear that this community will be playing constant whack-a-mole. With each new thing, this administration continues to try to pull to further their interests. And I'm referring to that game that we played as children where you have a hammer and moles keep popping up from different holes and you have to whack down each one. That's what we're doing here and that's what we're going to be doing as long as Mr. Sarvis's administration remains. And, you know, for this board to continue to support this kind of policy and practice is just really inexcusable.
Thank you. Ms. Smith. Now, Mrs. Smith, you also wanted to speak on the fact that the board took no action in closed session. Did you want to speak to that now?
Will you give me one more time to do that?
If you want to talk about no action, the report that there was no action in closed session.
If I have more time in my public comments time period.
You can have an extra minute.
Okay.
But it has to be about no action on closed session.
Well
And I, and I will
Give me one extra minute when I wanted to speak on closed session.
It depends on how many people are speaking. The board president can
Certainly, it depends on that.
Yes. Ms. Smith, this is your chance. You have two minutes on no action by closed session and two minutes of general public comment.
Uh, wait a minute. I thought I had three minutes on public comment.
You can have three minutes on public comment or you can have two minutes on public comment and two minutes on no action in closed session.
Okay, I'm just going to speak for four minutes.
No. Two minutes on C2 and two minutes on public comment.
Point of order.
Mrs. Smith, you're not on the board, so you don't have a right to ask about points of order at this point. But I'm giving you two minutes of time to talk about closed session action. Number C2, announcement of closed session action.
I'm sorry, but you're violating parliamentary procedure. You're changing the policy right as you speak.
Your time is now ticking, Mr. Hedjung.
President Parker, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, my name is Kate Smith. God bless America. Mrs. Smith went to Washington and I returned with an education consultant, a management consultant, a national journalist.
Mrs. Smith, this needs to be about no action on closed session.
Excuse me, you don't know what I'm speaking about unless you listen to me. I am speaking. I will, you've I did not agree to your time schedule to agree to speak for two minutes on the closed session and two minutes on
Mrs. Smith.
But you're interrupting me and you're taking my time. Are you allowed to interrupt a speaker when I have the floor? I have the floor.
You need to speak about no action on closed session.
I can't speak if you don't let me. I got through 10 seconds and you interrupted me. I will speak on
She's speaking under public comment. She can speak about anything under the board's jurisdiction.
Then this is your 44 seconds left on public comment.
No, you will start the clock over because you interrupted me and that is on camera. I would like to have my time started, please.
Mrs. Smith, so you're giving up no action, the item on no action on closed session, and you want to move to public comment? Public comment.
My name is Kate Smith. God bless America. We have laws here. And you were elected to be sure that the laws were upheld. You swore an oath. You have to know parliamentary procedure for you to head this meeting.
I do, Mrs. Smith. I'm going to give you 30 seconds of extra time to talk about public comment, item C3.
Would you just let me speak without interrupting? I am just talking to you, okay? I went to Washington, I came back with an education consultant, a community organizer, a national journalist, and a management consultant. And we are mobilizing to change this situation. It is corrupt. We can't get you to use ethical, legal, or civil hiring practices so that our school district can have legal, ethical, and civil education for our children. There is no democratic education for our children. We have corruption. And we are going to, one, in order to expose government and school corruption, reform education, restore justice and democracy in our schools and community.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith.
No, I'm sorry, I have three minutes. To establish the rights and responsibilities of parents, teachers, and students.
Mrs. Smith, you are now out of order.
I am sorry, you would not let me speak without interrupting. I would like to have my three minutes. I did not agree
We will, yes, Dr. Noel.
Can we move for a five-minute reset?
Thank you.
I can get a second.
All those in favor? We are back, although we're missing Dr. Sarvis. And I hope that he will be returning shortly. Have you seen him, Mrs. Sawaski?
No, I have not. I thought he left. He went out the door. Was that way?
We are now on to item D1.
I put in a request
For public comment?
On a Spanish one, yellow or orange. For, for public comment.
There's some down there that
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I thought, you said special education, I thought that was D1.
No, they were, they were down on the corner.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we still have an item on closed, on public comment?
Ah, we do have an item on public comment, yes. So Cory Bream.
Want to call that? Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Yesterday, you had a training or consultation or opening or retreat, whatever you want to title it. I think somebody turned it off. Oh, I'm here. I mean, I'm on, but
The mic's off.
There you go.
So, yesterday, woo, now it's real Yesterday, they, you had a meeting of some sort, brought people in and had a speaker and such. I just want to point out, I think it's really important to note, if you weren't present, nor was I, but through the grapevine, I heard that roughly 35% of all the aides in the district attended. So, I, I'm all about the aides. I think they need higher pay, more education. There are frontline communication with kids that have real issues. I think they're underappreciated, undervalued, and definitely underpaid, but I keep bringing that up. It's gone nowhere. So I'm here to stand up and say, they, they want an education. They were there, they were in attendance at that meeting at a higher percentage than anybody else or category in the district. They came away from that meeting and spoke to their friends, because I heard my aide talk to another aide about the meeting. It needs to continue. I think that's a step in the right direction, but more education at the meeting, less orientation could maybe be beneficial. So I'm definitely saying, yay, it's the right action. I want to point out the aides were there, they want the education, but you offered to pay them for their time and they actually showed up. I think that's so important to note. So I have a few notes, let's see. The first thing is that the aides are probably the biggest issue and the first thing parents mention. We now have the ability to meet with them this Friday and I've not received any notification. I think that is absolutely important. So I, of course, emailed my principal, who I informed that Dr., that Ms. Sawaski was sort of under the impression that the principals would handle this and that I've received no notification that I'm allowed to meet my aide and the time is coming and passing. And how do I plan to meet my aide if I'm going to be out of town? Because I never knew I could. So here we have a great opportunity that's being overlooked and I think the principals aren't really doing what they need to do. So, of course, my principal hemmed and hummed and decided he's going to call everybody, which is great that he's going to take action, but I'm not at every school. So that kind of handles one school for you. Please fix it because it's such a great thing that's occurring. Training nearly half, almost, you know, 35% of the aides showed up, that's great. They are interested in their jobs, the district, you need to pay them more. You're putting money into training them. They're the front line for the, between the patient and you, or the client and you of some form. Patient, my job.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And I just want to say that, that if you're going to train them and they're going to be your frontline communication with the child and the parent effectively, why not pay them so they stay? Every district around us pays more. We're not even at an average pay range. So I'm here to go up again to say, please increase their pay. I know we have money coming in for special ed, maybe that could be considered, but I just want to stand up here and say, they deserve it. They work hard, they lift these kids that are heavy, they deal with aggressive children, they deal with the emotionally unstable children. I have one of those. And it's exhausting, they deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathryn Abarka.
May I comment for the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've been talking to the principals about making sure this is set up since last week and thank you for the notification. We will double-check with all of them tomorrow to see whether that's been done.
Kathryn Abarka, followed by Eric Henty.
This is for
Oh, D1, I'm
Sorry, yeah.
I apologize.
And I'm not catching on that. So, public comment. We're now through with public comment, there were no others. So now we're moving on to item D1, which is approval of executive director of special education. Dr. Sarvis.
Well, I've submitted Tom Guajardo's name to the board as executive director of special education. Tom has an extensive background in education, has served in many roles, including special director of special education. He served as superintendent in two smaller districts where he essentially served as director of special education as well. We've found out a lot about Tom. He, he was the top choice of the interview panel and on that interview panel, we had four parents who were special education parents. And of course, we had the, the regular representation of, of staff and, and other people on that panel. Carol Miller and I, and Carol Miller would be here, but her husband had surgery. But Carol Miller and I, in particular, spent a lot of time, most of a week, researching Tom's background. Three other people spent time researching his background. And of the 20 people that Carol and I talked to and that encompassed a range of, of parents, a number of parents who worked with him in, in many ways, including Spanish-speaking parents, including parents who were parents as he was a superintendent in his last district, but who had special education children, colleagues, other, other administrators in special education. I talked to a SLP director, of course, we talked to previous supervisors. I even talked with the prior board member in one of his school districts, even talked to a police chief. We went looking for people who could tell us about Tom and they consistently said the same thing, that this is a man of integrity, that this is a man with good people skills. He was one who listened, he was a problem solver. Parents told us that he sit, sat down with them, carefully listened to what the problem was, he brought in resources. And, and one of the parents said, "And my son just graduated thanks to Tom Guajardo." So his people skills are without question. Tom told us that he left one of the positions on agreement with the board, that the board was going in another direction and wanted to pursue bilingual instruction. Tom said that, that he told them that they should disagree about that because he didn't think the research was with them. The district did not have one-third of the students who are English speakers. And the, the district did not have the staff that was prepared and trained to do that. And the board president verified that, that that was the discussion, that that was, in fact, the agreement to disagree and that the relationships between Tom and the board were fine through the end of his, his, his term in the position. Everything that, that Tom told us was verified in direct background checks and, and direct contacts with people. We have offered him a three-year contract and we think that's important, assuming the boards approves this, of course, he knows that. And we think this is important because we told him, we want someone here for a good long period of time, a minimum, very minimum of three years. And Tom responded that he would intend to be here for a long period of time and would guarantee us a minimum of three years, but that if he's to bring his family down, he would like a commitment on our part as well. And I think that's appropriate. I think Tom understands, given the conditions of the contract, that he could be reassigned and the board may want to have a discussion about that. The board had, had agreed to move the salary to a higher level. We would be giving Tom full credit for all of his experience in special education. We would be starting him at $133,000 a year. Together with, with the benefits and retirement, that would constitute a total cost of $160,000. And I think that's a fair wage for this kind of position. And of course, the board's been through that discussion about, about the position and we've had the experience of not finding the people that, that we thought were appropriate for this position in the past. So you may have questions to ask of me or ask of Robin about Tom Guajardo. I think he's a fine choice. He is fully bicultural and bilingual. I think that's a big advantage in our district. We really need to start by addressing our relationships with parents and I think Tom is the man to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Dr. Noel?
This is really a question. If, if the board votes to appoint Mr. Guajardo, I wonder if it would be possible to release the questions that were asked? Because I think the public would like to know what the board is asking of the candidates. And I'm thinking of the questions that are asked in the panel and the review and the questions that were asked in, in the interviews we just had. I don't, I, I would want to be very careful that it doesn't violate confidentiality of personnel records. Perhaps Mr. Guajardo would be willing to, to approve that, to waive if, if there's a confidentiality issue. But I think it would be very helpful in the current atmosphere for the public to know what's been asked. Didn't say the answers, I just said the, the questions.
That would be unusual. I would have no problem releasing the questions that we had used in the first interview and in the second interview with him. Frankly, I would have problems releasing any sort of Frankly, I would have problems releasing any sort of discussion or, or questions or, or answers or anything out of closed session. Uh, I think that constitutes a problem, and, of course, the rest of the board will want to weigh in on that.
The, the board could always waive its privilege if it's so desired, but, um, I think it would raise some troubling concerns, but...
Well, I would like, I would like the public to know what question I asked, and, uh, right now, I guess I'm, I'm not allowed to, to do that, unless the board would grant me that.
I believe the board could probably waive that.
Authorization.
Mrs. Cordero?
I'd be happy to submit them in advance for your perusal.
I, I mean, I'm assuming we could get them off the recording, um, so that we know verbatim what was actually asked. Um, I, and I would have no objection to releasing that, the confidentiality on just that part of the closed session.
Just the questions themselves.
But I...
Yeah, just the questions.
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just wondering if we need to get legal advice on that before we do it.
Yes.
Um, and maybe we could agree, subject to...
I, I wouldn't want to make a motion at, at this point, but I, I would, I would want to, uh, have a legal opinion on it first, Dr. Noel, and then we can see about moving forward with that, although at this point...
But I, I would, I would, I would hate to see us cherry on this. I think it should be done very promptly and a message get, uh, get out very loud and clear.
But I, I also would like a legal opinion on even personnel questions. Um, so, again, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I, I, I would like some advice on it. Mrs. Deacon?
Just as a note, I, and I personally don't have a problem with releasing the questions either or sharing those that were provided from the, um, this parent group, because those are also questions that were available for us to ask. Um, one concern I did have would be if any of the questions used in the original interview process are kinds of questions that we're using as we hire our directors, because we, we would prefer not to have those questions available in advance in, in some cases for prospective employees.
That was my thought, too, because I know when we, um, you know, we sign off on the, and people have been in the interviews, you, you leave everything in the room, and I know in previous times I've asked Chris to share questions with other people to get their feedback, and she, she's very clear about the rules on that. I'm assuming it's legal regulations around personnel. So I don't know the answer, if we can do it or not, but I'm, I'm thinking...
Let us bring a proposal back to you about what we think we can release.
What do you...
Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments now, or would you like to take public comment? All right. We will go ahead and close to public comment at this point. Are we at six speakers? All right, there will be three minutes each, and Mrs. Cordero can take it away.
Okay. Now Catherine Abarca. And followed by Eric Hancy, followed by Tom Breen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and administration. I just want to say thank you for hiring Carol Miller. I've heard from parents that she's actually made more headway in the last two weeks than your interns did for six months, so thank you very much for that. And we should do everything we can to keep her around. Um, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the potential Executive Director for Special Education, Mr. Guajardo. I've not met or spoken to Mr. Guajardo. I'm sure he's a great guy. Um, I'm sure he has plenty of personal and professional strengths, but I have strong concerns about his qualifications for special education. He doesn't, uh, has a special education credential. He has no resource or special day class teaching credentials, no pupil personnel services or direct services, uh, credential, or state license even, for special education. He is a lifelong general educational professional with experience in district administration. The question is, do we need another administrator? Or do we need somebody who can actually get into the trenches and work out our problems? I really find it baffling that we're suggesting and considering appointing someone who really, it's a primary leadership position. FICMAT suggests that a special education director have a minimum of five years of successful teaching experience in special education. This is directly from the FICMAT report. Uh, or related fields, and a minimum of two years' experience as a program specialist, program manager, or coordinator, and that's for special education director. For the executive director, they suggest a minimum of two years' experience as a senior manager in special ed, five years' experience in district-level work, including a wide range of assigned responsibilities, and extensive experience required in managing special education services with strong background and effective communication. So that's directly out of the report we paid so much money for. So I can't fathom why we're sitting here considering hiring someone who is not a specialist in special education. Like, here we go again. The, um, FICMAT report also states that the lack of adequate experience and effective leadership, particularly in the last two hires, is a primary cause of the extraordinary turnover in this district. So again, what are we doing here? Are we doing the same thing over and over and over again? I'm just concerned, not on a personal level, but on a professional level, that parents that I talk to ask these same kind of questions. Okay, it's like when we hired our resource parent, who doesn't and doesn't have any experience in special education law, doesn't have a child in special education. Here we go again. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to you and let you know what the FICMAT report says, and I know that we'll support whatever your decision is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abarca. Eric Hancy, followed by Tom Breen, followed by Kate Smith.
Good evening. I sent, uh, an email yesterday to all the board members and to the superintendents, and I basically just wanted to read it again, just to, to reinforce. But basically, a common concern among the members of the CAC group is the term of the contract that might be extended to Mr. Guajardo. The depth and success of his experience in the special education environment has been difficult to assess, and given the constraints the district has had with interviewing and background investigations of previous candidates and hires, I would strongly recommend that a single-year contract be extended at best. With the benefit package of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, a two-year or particularly a three-year contract could be a very costly mistake if it's determined that Mr. Guajardo is ultimately not the best candidate or the match for this position. So I believe that, given the enormity of the task that's being requested of the new Executive Director, it would be entirely appropriate to give both Mr. Guajardo and the district the option of reviewing the situation after a year and making a decision if it's a good match and continuing from there. So I just ask for your consideration with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancy. Tom Breen, followed by Kate Smith, followed by David Gilbertson.
Thank you very much. I just, I wanted to, uh, address basically the same thing that Eric just spoke about, is the term of the contract, and, and keeping in mind the history with the special ed department and the, the turnover that we've had in this department, are there some backdoor in this contract that will, if things don't work out as we hope, that you're not stuck paying a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for services aren't rendered? As a businessman, that doesn't make sense to me. Are there some benchmarks that we can, can use to, um, measure the success? Perhaps, uh, a one-year contract with some options after benchmarks are made? I, I don't know the proper terminology, uh, for this type of contract. But as a taxpayer, it concerns me. As a businessman, it concerns me. So I'd, I'd hope that you consider those things in your decision-making process. I also wanted to comment about, uh, Carol Miller. My wife had a very long conversation with her on the phone last night and came away just raving about the things that she's done and accomplished, accomplished in this very short period of time, and appreciate that you brought her in to, to take over and, and get things rolling, and, um, very excited about her, and I'm hoping that you can find some way to keep her on for a longer period. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Breen. Kate Smith, followed by David Gilbertson, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Maybe this is what is called the new politics of community. We're on a roll. I am your Santa Barbara School District Parent Representative to the CELPA CAC, so I went and spoke to Carol Miller for an hour. Now, she was excited to hear that we had a mutual colleague. She worked on a long project, I believe it was when she was at the California Department of Education, with a man who I have known for twelve years. He now has a, a guardian angel advocacy business. So perhaps you will listen to the parents, so that you don't bring a man down from, uh, Northern California with his entire family, uh, you know, maybe in something that we, it couldn't possibly work out, given the fact that the educational reform plan has already been written about twelve years ago. It can't be done by an autocratic system of management. You have to work with the parents and the teachers for education reform. So I'm going to make you an offer you can't refuse. How about if the parents posit your hiring of two individuals who are local? We all know each other, and we know their work. They have been exemplary, extraordinary administrators for decades, and one of them received an honor from one of your parents and her internationally-known Dyslexia Awareness Resource Center. How about if these people, who we posit to you as a solution for this incredible crisis and conflict, how about if they would work for half the price that you're...
Thirty seconds.
Offering to Tom Guajardo? I am flabbergasted by the offer of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, much more than you paid your superintendent just the last time around. Debbie Flores was paid a hundred and twenty thousand to run the district. How about if we bring in people who will do the job...
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank, thank you, Ms. Smith.
At such a savings, you can't refuse it.
David Gilbertson, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
My name's David Gilbertson. Welcome to a new school year. It's nice to be back. Uh, I'm a employee of the district. I'm currently a psychologist, and, um, I did attend the all-day training today. I chose not to attend, uh, yesterday's voluntary training, and I, I wanted to make it clear it was not because, uh, I, I didn't want to be there. However, uh, uh, the offer was for fifty dollars to come and spend four hours of my time. That, that comes down to twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. And, uh, I've done a lot of things for free in this district. I was not willing to spend a, a voluntary day for twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. And, uh, personally, I took it as somewhat of an insult, and I understand we're under a tight budget, but I think twelve dollars and fifty cents, um, i- isn't enough.
Mr. Gilbertson, Dr. Gilbertson, could you...
Would just as soon sleep.
Could you tie it into the director, please?
Yes. Now, let me, uh, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, e- express my concern. Uh, I, uh, in June of two thousand eight, uh, my job as Coordinator of Special Education was eliminated on the recommendation of the superintendent. Um, I am an administrator in the district. I have exceptional evaluations. I have very high recommendations. Uh, when, when my job was eliminated, it was subsequent to assisting a parent in filing complaints against the district for willful violations of state and federal laws. And, uh, I'm currently a psychologist, and I am representing children in this district with disabilities. I'm bringing to your attention the fact that my, uh, job as a coordinator of special education, uh, looks almost identical to the, the current Director of Special Education position. And so I'm going to leave this with you. This, these documents were prepared by the Personnel Director. I believe it's fourteen of the sixteen job duties in the current Director of Special Education were actually, uh, coordinator of special education functions, and I believe that constructive elimination of my job is illegal, and I, and I request publicly to be placed back in my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbertson. Jennifer Griffin?
Hi, um, I don't get up and speak very often, um, certainly not off the cuff, because I'm not very good at it, um, but I just wanted to support some of the comments that were made, so that you know how many of us feel the same way. And, and I'm really excited that you have found somebody that, you know, has integrity and good people skills, because I think those are two very important qualifications for this job, but, um, I am really concerned that, that, um, I haven't really heard a lot about his special education background, and I, more than anybody, want somebody in this job. I mean, I really, I've told both of you that, you know, this is, I'd love to see this all settled. Um, and I agree with Tom Breen that maybe the benchmarks would be, um, important, and certainly, one really great benchmark to reach would be to see none of us at any of these meetings. I think that that would be, that would tell you a lot, don't you think? Um, so, a three-year contract, that also makes me a little nervous, um, and, uh, I really like what Kathy and Eric said, so I, and Tom, so I'm ditto with that. And last but not least, yay Carol Miller. I think she's a really good hire, and let's keep her for as long as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, board members, other comments, questions?
I, I have a speaker slip in the room.
Sorry, is there a speaker slip for... It could be that it got mixed up with the public comment over here. Yes, Carolyn Renard, three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to say that you have again violated the Brown Act by revising the agenda yesterday and not notifying people that you sent out the previous agenda to, that the agenda was revised. It was, it was apparently revised, uh, regarding this agenda item, although it doesn't specify what was revised in the new revised agenda that's been posted. So here we go again with the Brown Act violations. Um, and putting this on the action agenda, when we are, the board is considering this important issue for the first time, is just unconscionable again, and the three-year contract is again unconscionable, as Sarvis has not changed his spots. I'm concerned that you're considering hiring someone who does not seem to have sufficient special education, hands-on, and administrative experience to fill the difficult, this difficult role, and, and, uh, he will not have the experience to stand up against Mr. Sarvis's practices. Uh, that concerns me also. I am further concerned about why you are considering, why, why you are considering the, uh, hiring someone, uh, with this lack of experience, especially when there are har- highly qualified people with more experience, uh, that are being excluded from the process, such as Steve Mashad, who has, who has presided over six hundred IEP meetings during his superintendent experience. If you need to fill this position so quickly and so badly, um, you should have someone from CDE come in and fill in until a new special education administrative team can be put into place, and this person can then train, uh, the new people and, and provide continuity. I suggested this weeks ago to Board President Kate Parker, but nothing has come of it, of course. Also, um, the Brown Act violations continue with the, uh, the hiring. I was looking some more at the agendas and the minutes, uh, when involved with Jacob Jensen's hiring, and clearly you violated the Brown Act, Carolyn Renard, and now you're covering it up. Thank you.
This needs to be about the Executive Director position. All right.
Well, I do have a note, and it's about the salary. In fact, it, it ties right into the, uh, agenda clarification. Uh, we put out the agenda on Friday. The parenthesis around salary plus benefits wasn't there. Uh, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars is not the salary. That's the total package price, cost to the district. Uh, Monday morning, we put out a clarification, and instead of adding the, the parentheses, uh, we inserted the word "including salary and benefits." Um, I went to legal counsel for advice on this, and I was told that the agenda was legally con... constituted on Friday. It was legally posted, that the clarification was legally posted on Monday. There has been no violation of the Brown Act once again. In fact, I have a, a legal opinion on it, anticipating that there would again be a charge, but I don't think I need to read it. Uh, I certainly can if you'd like me to.
Um, no, I don't think so. Any other comments, board members? This is on the action agenda tonight.
Well, I, I'd like to begin by saying that, um, I've heard loud and clear from parents how much Dr. Carol Miller has made a positive impact in such a short amount of time and, um, and, and I think really given us a lot of, of traction and moving from a lack of trust to hope, which is a great thing. So it's important to me that Dr. Miller thinks that Tom Guajardo would be a great candidate, um, because I do trust her judgment. And, um, we will have her here for January and, and I'm also loud about that because, um, as we phase in a new executive director, I think it's going to be important to have that continuity and those relationships, um, blended. So I, I just wanted to make that point, that Dr. Miller is very supportive of, um, of Mr. Guajardo. I also wanted to, just to, to make the comment, and I think you've all heard this, but, um, Mr. Guajardo is bicultural and bilingual. And I think it's, this is something our district really needs and I think that he is really uniquely qualified to open the door in a community that we know hasn't had enough access. Um, so to me, that, that's a real strength that he would bring as a candidate. And I'll leave it there for now and some other people chime in.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just wanted to say that, um, thank you all for coming and expressing your, your interest in these, this appointment. Many of you raised issues that we also had considered, um, in our discussion, uh, in, uh, with Mr. Guajardo. So we can't go into the discussion itself because it took place in closed session. Um, but I think, um, well, just suffice it to say that the issues that most of you brought up were issues that many of us felt, uh, we wanted further answers to and I think we felt that we got them.
Dr. Noel, any comments or questions?
No.
Um, I will...
Well, I, I'll make, I'll make a motion, but I want, but I, I'm prepared to make an amendment to, to, okay?
All right. I, I would like to go ahead and chime in now because, um, since you don't have any comments at this point in time, but just that, uh, I think it's been hard on this, uh, our entire special ed community, from students to parents to staff, to be in this period of uncertainty. Um, but it's also very hard for Saul to make a leap of faith at this point. And, um, you, everybody has raised important questions. I know that they were raised in the initial interview processes, even though I wasn't there. Um, but again, um, I certainly have looked at his record, uh, which includes being, uh, superintendent, a director of special education, um, of, uh, a superintendent in a small district where he was responsible for special education. Um, and given his global background, I think that he could be a good fit for this job. So that's where I am. Dr. Noel?
Yeah. Uh, I, uh, there was a lot of buzz on the internet today and, uh, and, and I just feel so constrained because I can't talk about what I even thought in closed session, let alone what I said. Uh, it seems that one anyway, that, I know that's an exaggeration. Uh, but it, but there was in, see, is it, is it legal for me to say there was information in closed session that addressed some of those issues? No, I can't say that. Uh, that's why I ask for us to be more open, because I think much of that buzz, uh, could, if there were more dissemination of the information that was available, that was made available to us tonight particularly, much of that would have been self-correcting. And, and, uh, so I, I just, we have a structural problem here, right? And, and I understand and, and I have very strong feelings about confidentiality. I would certainly, uh, we, we have a file and it's got letters in it. Those letters are sacrosanct. You just don't, you know, reveal those things. But, uh, but I think so much of what is considered in this process is benign information, information that the public needs to know and then they understand, so they don't have all this crap that's going around. Pardon me, but, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's too much. Okay? So that's, that's my preface. I, I will move, we have here a contract, okay? And, uh, and do you have it back there? Do, do they not have this document?
No.
Then I won't, I won't, I won't make a motion until this is in the hands of the public. I mean, I don't think that's appropriate.
What I'm, what I'm asking you to do is not move the contract. I'm asking you to appoint Tom Guajardo to this position. If you'd like to set stipulations on that, that would be fine.
I don't fully understand the difference between appointing him and, and we've been through this before where, where I, I've said, "Well, let's see the real contract." No, the appointment was the contract. And, uh, I'm not going to go that way, uh, there this time.
Is there any problem with us taking a five-minute break? The contract's a public, public document, so...
Public document, you have to reveal it. What's wrong with giving the people a contract?
All right. Let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess and make copies of it.